I'll meet in order and ask Councilman Joe Watson to introduce the positions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome my visitors. It's good to see y'all here today, respective of our future upcoming councilmen. Colrow.
Councilman Poole.
Here.
Councilman Cotton.
Here.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Here.
Councilman Watson.
Here.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
We have a quorum for business, Mayor.
Approval of the agenda.
Mayor, the council has a copy of the agenda. I'll backtrack on that. We have a copy of the agenda that is on the wall right now.
Okay.
I'll give you just a moment to look that over. You should have a copy in your possession as one was sent out yesterday. But as you look over the agenda, are there any changes or alterations that need to be made to the agenda? If not, and all those who would like to approve it as presented, let it be known by Saint Aye.
Aye.
And be opposed, please say no. Ayes have it and the agenda is approved as presented.
First item of business on the agenda is the canvas of the 2016 Bruton Municipal Election, and I'll call it City Clerk.
Mayor, this is a profile of the 2016 Bruton Municipal Election. The numbers were taken directly from the tapes that came out of the machines, or also from the provisional ballots that were taken to the Board of Registars, and they certified the right of those to be counted in the election, and the absentee ballot. So you'll see how it's broken down into categories. For the office of Mayor, the machines were set up to record the votes tabulated in Districts 1 and 2, and it was set up to record separately the votes given in Districts 3 and 4. You'll see there's a column there for the absentee ballots that were submitted. You'll see what the ALCO District #5 voting precinct resulted in, and then you'll see the number of provisional votes. So you put those together, and then to the right-hand side, you see the actual vote totals. For the positions of Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, you'll see the respective column there for the votes, and actually what should be on that page is Districts 3 and 4 should be in that second column. See the error there, but nonetheless, the numbers are correct. You'll add that to the absentee ballots, and then to the provisional, and then on the right-hand side, you will get the ultimate total. Those numbers are transferred over to a resolution. It's numbered 16-0830. It would be a resolution whereby the governing body of the City of Bruton indicates that it is met and officially recognizes that these votes are the official votes from the 2016 Bruton Municipal Election.
I make a motion to approve Resolution #16-0830.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton to approve Resolution #16-0830 was the second. Coach Cotton, okay, seconded by Coach Cotton. Are there any questions concerning any of the information? Hearing no questions, motions made by Councilman Kerry Barton to approve Resolution #16-0830, seconded by Councilman Cotton. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and Resolution #16-0830 is approved, and these election results are certified as official. Before, Councilman, before you leave, I do have certificates of election that I'm going to need the Mayor and the council to sign before you leave, so I'm just giving you a heads-up on that beforehand before you leave.
Next item is a simple slide show for the first viewing of the proposed 2016-17 budget presentation by the City Clerk.
Okay, we've got to go to the first. It has been said that budgeting, if you do it right, is telling your money where you want it to go rather than wondering where it went. On a personal level, probably a lot of folks from time to time wonder where their money went, how it disappeared and vanished so rapidly. Budgeting helps you to make sure that it goes where you want it to go rather than wondering where it went. Budgeting needs to be done on purpose, that is with a plan, so that you can make best use to the most effective steward of the money that you have coming in, and it's even more incumbent upon a city government since we're receiving taxpayers' money to manage it responsibly and to use it wisely. Even a small leak can sink a big ship, so we try to be careful and deliberate and conscientious in the way we manage the money and the way we budget it, because we want the ship of the City of Bruton to sail strongly and to do very well. I did a good bit of a study of projected revenue. I can tell you that the year 2015 income of the City of Bruton was considerably better than 2014. Then when we get into 2016, while it is a whisker better than 2015, it did not go backwards. It remained steady, if not a little bit beyond the figures from last year. So I did the best job that I could in determining the trends of the money to see what direction it was going, and we come up with a projected revenue for general revenue. I'll make you aware that general revenue is going to cover things like general government, the Police Department, the Fire Department, Municipal Court, information technology, community development, public works, and community recreation. That's the money that comes in that we project there. That totaled $7,232,445 that should be able to cover those aspects of city responsibilities. These other funds, the sewer, sanitation, gas, airport, they are commonly referred to as enterprise funds. They generate their own revenue and their own income, and are expected to support their own causes and to cover their own budget items. And in each of these instances, they will. And I'll get into further elaboration on that as we go on into the slides, but you'll see that the total budget is $33,41,028. That includes the general revenue and the enterprise funds, and the budget for FY2016 and '17 is equal to what the projected revenue for the year would be offset. This is a real busy slide, but I put it up to try to give you a comparison, so that you can at least see where we've been and where we're headed. This category will be what was actually spent in fiscal year 2014 and '15. This is going to be what the proposed budget for fiscal year 2017 is. This is the difference between actual expenditures of a couple of years ago, and then FY2017, and then you get fiscal year 2016. In that final category over there is the difference between fiscal year 2016 and '17. I'll just touch on these highlights, and then we will go through each slide. And if you need to interrupt me and ask me a question, I'll do the best I can to entertain and address those. General Government shows an increase of $73,000. Last year, the City Council voted to implement a 2.5 percent wage increase across the board, so I had to put this on this budget to show what the actual expenditures would be. And then when you give the 2.5 percent raise, you also have to make adjustments for your retirement and for your VICA. And then once you put that together and add that to the increase that the new incoming council will receive, you'll find out that pretty much accounts for that additional $73,000 there. The program management department remains relatively the same, almost the same. By the time I made the 2.5 percent modification for the Police Department budget, you'll see that the increase there is quite nominal. We get into Animal Control, and this is an ongoing challenge for the city as we're continuing to find our way with it. But you know, in the last few years, the Humane Society managed Animal Control for the city. Then the city took it over, then it went back to the Humane Society, and now it's back with the city. So we're still finding our way with the financial obligations of Animal Control, but I can say that all appearances indicate that it is efficiently managed money-wise. We get into Public Works, and in the last year or so, some adjustments, modifications had to be made to get salary line item in line with the actual expenditure, and there was a desire by the council to improve and enhance the salaries as possible. And then you put that together with a new line item covering sidewalks, and a new line item covering public beautification. And there's one other line item that was new and not in before, but I'll show you that one when we get to it. That pretty much encompasses that increase for Public Works. Library is practically the same. Once the 2.5 percent modification was made to the categories I mentioned on retirement, wages, and VICA, it pretty much gobbles up that nominal increase. Community Development is going to be a decrease there. I'll get into that explanation when we get to that slide. Information Technology is just a slight increase there. Municipal Court has a more hefty increase, but you'll recall that we had to get out of an arrangement with Judicial Correction Services as they did the probation monitoring and the collection aspect from Municipal Court. We had to add another employee to Municipal Court, and by the time you calculate, compute the wages, VICA, the retirement, et cetera, that explains that increase there. The cemetery increase is novel. Community Recreation, there is an increase there. That's going to be explained by an increase in money allocated for Bruton Youth Football because participation is much, much greater now in Bruton Youth Football than it used to be, and equipment's having to be replaced due to concussion concerns, et cetera. In addition, the City of Bruton is going to sponsor a one-time $10,000 gift to the City Board of Education to get an archery program going in the city, and the Board of Education has assured us that if we give that first $10,000 upfront, that they will provide the maintenance for that archery program, and it's a popular, popular sport in the United States today. And then also, part of that $83,000 is an increase for the YMCA on their contract with the city concerning the city using their parks, their ballfields, et cetera, for the various sporting activities that our young boys and our young girls participate in, namely, Cal Ripken Baseball and Girls' Softball. Also, a funding request was made by the YMCA of $10,000 to help them with modifying the ballfields because they changed their manner of play whereby they could steal bases. So the infield had to be modified, the base pass had to be modified. And when that request was initially made, we did not have the funding to be able to provide it, and that is included in this budget item here. As long as funds are available, that money will be provided on a contractual basis to the YMCA for the service they provide to us. City Parks indicated a little bit of an increase because there's a whole lot more work going on in city parks, and there's an increased cost in maintaining city parks. And I believe that we'd all be on the same page in saying the parks look very, very nice, and they certainly are an asset for the appearance of the City of Bruton. Traffic, there's going to be an increase there. Traffic lights, signs, et cetera, are getting older, and there's going to be a need to maintain and improve that. Increase on sewer, I'll show you a couple of the line items that gobble up most of that when we get to it. Sanitation has a slight increase, and then there's the big increase on gas. The Gas Consultant and Utilities Director have gotten together. They examined and evaluated the contract that the city has in providing gas on a commercial basis but also on a residential basis. Based on what the projected sales of gas will be, and based on what the projected price of gas will be, it has been determined that in 2017 fiscal year budget, that will be the amount necessary to cover the gas budget, and it's a substantial increase over that. But there again, it has to do with the price of gas and the volume that will be sold. When we get to the airport, there's a significant increase there, but do not be alarmed. That's a federally and state-funded project that will occur at the airport whereby a parallel taxiway will be constructed, and the paperwork has been signed, and almost ready to do a pre-construction meeting there, and you're commenced with the work out there. And then when we get to health benefits, I'll make a few comments there. I won't spend this much time on every slide, but I at least wanted to give you some explanatory information to help you grasp and put together this picture, because that basically is in essence an overview summary, words I give, of what the rest of the slides will entail. Okay, go back on the slide, please. I think I... Okay, this is general government dispersment. Here you'll see as I indicated, there's going to be a variance there on elected officials. The incoming City Council owes you guys a debt of gratitude, because you guys, not knowing that you would be re-elected or not, still have the wisdom ahead of time to pass the resolution to improve and enhance the pay for City Council people who will come after you. So they owe you a debt of gratitude there. We have here industrial development in 2014. That figure wasn't there, so that's why it looks like it's a big figure, but it's been previously approved by the council to be in the budget and will continue to be so. And this is just the second sheet that goes with the general government budget. We will continue the USGS, Gauges Joint Funding Agreement that is supported by Georgia Pacific, the city, and also the Escambia County Commission. Okay. Program Management, the difference there is negligible other than I will point out for you, the Choo-Choo Grant that was federally awarded is being exhausted. It's going to be no more, so you'll see a difference in number there. The Police Department number is quite negligible, likely $28,000 difference in last year's budget and this year's budget once you get to the bottom line of it. No market grade significant alterations to the Police Department budget, practically maintaining status quo with just the changes being reflected in the salary and wages from the 2.5 percent increase the City Council awarded. And that would be the last page to the Police Department budget. As I indicated, Animal Control is being efficiently run, and it's still a work in progress, but it is determined that any budget changes need to be made that will be brought to your attention, starting from the roundup and getting to where we are. There's just not a great amount of money that is spent, in my estimation, on wastefulness where Animal Control is concerned. It's being run as efficiently as possible, to the best of my knowledge, well.
Steve, I'd just like to mention on Animal Control, when we took office, that number was in the mid-150s, I think.
That is, yes, that is correct. And the biggest part of Animal Control is just paying the wages for the workers. Fire Department, again, some of the wage lines here were out of line, out of order. We had to do some modifications to get those up to par. To the best of my knowledge, these numbers should accurately reflect what is going on, and also, I believe it was the desire of the council to get those at a certain place where it would be acceptable and proper, and I believe that has been done. After that, the numbers are pretty negligible in terms of great changes from the previous year. And this will be the second page to the Fire Department's budget. We get to Public Works Department, and this, again, was one of those where we had to do some sharpening of the pencil to get the numbers accurately reflecting exactly what the wages for employees were. In addition, there was the desire to get some of those more in line and in order as they should be, so to the best of my knowledge, that has been done. Then we go to the back page, and there are three lines I indicated to you earlier when I looked at the executive summary, and I can tell you what those three items are, there are two lines in the Public Works budget this going around. You'll see, there's a plan to put streetlights down Mildred Street that would match and be like the others that are on the downtown streets. Line item for sidewalk repairs, whether we put it as a line item in the budget or not, sidewalks have to be repaired because they can be dangerous to the community if roots pop up and one edge doesn't align with the other. So we're going to have to do sidewalk repairs. We've been doing it. Our audit has just required that we have a line item in the budget for it. And then, of course, there's the line item, as I indicated, for Public Works Beautification. I know that we all agree that the aesthetic value of our city is greatly enhanced now over what it once was, but that does take money to get it there and then money to maintain it. Municipal Library remains practically the same. We make the modifications for the 2.5 percent, and we apply that to the other line items, and that would account for the increase there. Community Development, what we have tried to do, and not what we have tried to do, what we have done in the last year and a half is to make this more accurately reflect what is going on. There was a time when court workers were being paid such-and-such percent out of court money and such-and-such percent out of community development. We've got court, pay in court, with community development, pay in community development. The salary over here would cover the building official, the code enforcement officer, the zoning officer, plus it covers half of the pay for the person who works the front desk in coordination with the Chamber of Commerce. So that would now accurately reflect the obligations for community development. We get into information technology, and there's a negligible increase here. I can tell you one of the great strides and progress with information technology over last year was the construction of and the equipment of a server room. For a long while, our city's server and essential computer brain headquarters was exposed. Not that any employee was going to do anything wrong or negative to it, but it really needed to be secured and taken care of. So its own room has been constructed. It has been put on its own stand, and the lines have been run to it, and it is something that we certainly can and should be proud of. Grant money was provided partially through one of the city's court funds, but also through an external source. I'm glad to tell you that as great of an asset as that is for the City of Bruton, it was done under budget. And we always like to break things if we don't under budget. But this is the bottom line reflective of information technology. Municipal Court, I indicated earlier that we had to no longer have an arrangement with Judicial Collection Services to do our money collection of fines and fees, and to do probation coverage. Now we have it in-house, so once we added that person, and then we put together that number with that new person, with the two workers already there, and our city judge, our city prosecutor, and all those folk related to court matters, that would be an accurate number that reflects the wages and salaries for Municipal Court. And once we told them all of that, that's the number we come to at bottom for Municipal Court. And Municipal Court pretty much covers its own expenses with the collection of fines and fees. Community Recreation, I touched on this just a little bit earlier. There's considerable more money to put in Bruton Youth Football. There are a whole lot more children participating, therefore the need to provide or allocate more funds is there. But also, equipment needed to be upgraded, just because there's a great concern for concussion nowadays, and the equipment they had was awful. So the City Finance Committee, they've approved this, and it's brought to you today to give you information on it. There will be the ongoing support for the summer basketball program. I intend to hear that we have a contract with the YMCA. They provide the ballparks for the girls' softball and the league baseball. That's almost a $20,000 increase there. That has covered a $10,000 increase on their contract with the city. They're requesting $50,000 now. They presented a logistical explanation of all the projects they have implemented now in the ballparks. This initial contract was established many, many years ago. So the $50,000 contract for us to use the White State Ballparks, that would take a part of that plus that $10,000 as available could be forwarded to the body to help them with the ballpark modification funding request that they gave to us last year. Please, on the last, go back to the last page. I think there's one more thing I need to point out here, please. Building repairs and maintenance. New roofs needed on the clubhouse up there, okay? Let me see. The other numbers are fairly comparable. I do know that some equipment leases are going to have to be considered very soon, so that number is there, believing it will cover what that requirement will be. City Parks, we're proud of our city parks. They're beautiful. They're an aesthetic asset for the City of Bruton. There's going to be an increase in the Jenny's Park. Just takes more money to cover it, to look after it. A slight increase there for electricity to service beautiful lights to keep them burning in the park. Actually, there's more lights down there, and there's more of an increase there. We continue to get positive feedback from the public and from guests who come to town on the quality of our parks. Traffic Department, going to be some increases there. I believe a $10,000 increase there over what the previous budget was. Traffic lights are getting old, and those things are not cheap to replace when replacements are needed. Cemetery numbers remain quite comparable and equal to what has been. Once you apply the cost of living increase to the City Council awarded them, that certainly covers what increase will be there. Sewer Operation Fund dispersment. Sewer is an enterprise fund. It brings in more money than what the budget obligation is. That's a good thing because we have SRF loan to pay there. We have some bonds that have to be paid off by sewer money. And then, there are two things that are new line items for this budget that were not on the previous one. There is fencing that needs to be put up around the old lagoon. There's an estimate there. Before that project commenced, we'll get more than one estimate, but that gives us a pretty round ballpark number of what we'll be dealing with. And then, the Utility Department Director has indicated he wants to implement a program for line rule control in the City of Bruton, and he projects that it will cost that to do. So those are additions to this budget that have not been. Sanitation Fund is an enterprise fund. Its numbers are pretty comparable to what last year's budget were. Sanitation is bringing in more money currently. That's a good thing. Then, what the obligations are, of course, we pay what used to be BFI, I believe was allied to the public now, the public waste for picking up the garbage that the city provides on trash service. And from the feedback I'm getting from the community, while it's not perfect, I believe there's been vast improvement over the city picking up the debris, nails, leaves, et cetera, than what it once was. Gas Department, again, is an enterprise fund, and the expense that's put in the budget here is certainly a projection of what we anticipate the price of gas to be, but also the volume of gas that will be sold. One significant deviation here is an increase in Gas Consultant fees. We have to have the input, the expert advice, input, and advice of experts in order to be able to manage this and manage it effectively. So there's a Gas Consultant who has been being utilized for quite some time, and that will continue to be the case. There is the host of a gas promotion program to be run by the Gas Department when such an opportunity arises to be able to provide water heaters, et cetera, for folk who hook on to gas. That can be done legally when the gas district is up and operating the way that it needs to be. Since malitations have been put in for that, and there's a plan to do some GPS mapping upgrades that have not been done here before. And then you have those items that would conclude, but the big swinger to the whole Gas Department budget has to do with the projected cost of gas versus the anticipated estimated volume to be sold. Municipal Airport is another enterprise fund that pays for itself. The big difference this year and last year is that number, but that The big difference this year and last year is that number, but that's gonna be a federally and state-funded grant for a major project out at the airport, and the city will have approximately 5% participation in that, as long as the state cover their 5% as they typically do. Employee health benefits, you can be proud of the city of Bruton where employee health management is concerned. For the third consecutive year, there's been no increase in the health premiums that's charged by Blue Cross Blue Shield to the city of Bruton. Every year, an analysis is done comparing the cost of claims versus the premiums paid by the city, and the Blue Cross Blue Shield represented a sentence unheard of these days for a business or an entity such as the city government to have no increase in its employee health benefits cost. Some people get 25% increases at one time. There is a built-in increase here to cover approximately 10% increase if we get that next May, that's something that we can be very proud of. There's no use of the system here where the cost of claims compared to premiums paid is concerned. We're doing very, very well with that. Reserve fund, these are items that can be funded or financed over, above, and beyond the budget, provided that the revenues are sufficient to meet those needs. There are always things that come up that we don't anticipate to put in a budget, but if the funds are available there, nonetheless, they are desirable things to do. Reserve fund additions, these are things which may have to be done, may not have to be done, but allocation is made there for us to be able to address them if funding is available, if the money's there. I think Mildred Street Lights will put that in public works, so that's one thing there. I will draw to your attention, that number on the bottom, it has customarily been the practice of the city council, more times than not, a year we come and go, give a two-and-a-half percent raise to the city's employees, and the city has been very, very generous and good in that regard. I just make you aware that if you want to do that, it will take an act or vote to approve by the city council to implement, and it would cost the city approximately $156,000. That would cover a two-and-a-half percent raise, plus adjustments to VICA, plus adjustments to the retirement program that would have to be done if the city council desired to do that in the upcoming year. Having said all that, this brings us to conclusion with a frame that we started out at the beginning. You see the general revenue projection, you see the projected revenue for the various enterprise funds. You achieve this total figure of projected revenue, and the total figure of anticipated expenditures is that number, and it would meet the statutory obligation of being a balanced budget in that direction, the council associates together.
Anything else that comes before county?
No voting on that to occur today, but before we dismiss, I just remind the council and the mayor, have certificates of election for you to sign before you leave. That's all, Mayor.
Better than we're done.